Well, let's call this meeting over. And follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome morning, everybody. Glad to see everybody here. Our usual. Not that old that many.
All right. So any citizens who desire to be heard? Not seen but a few citizens. I think we'll move on to item four. Consideration possible action improving minutes of October 31, 2016. Let's move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Come on, Dave. Spit it out, brother.
All right. Item five. Consideration possible action on by monthly report. They involve emergency management director.
Title lights in the last two months.
Yep.
For your reference.
I don't see it here where you're riding around with a golf cart.
I don't own a golf cart.
Well, you want to buy one?
No.
Hang on there.
Assistant city of Gethry was sorry to take.
You sure you weren't a golf cart riding around saying sorry to get?
Yeah, I'm positive.
Okay.
Where was that coil that you posted for it?
Uh, it was on the main street going to the high school. It was about two blocks north of the high school on the east side of the road. He goes, I think it was a house that was under construction, had a lot of trees and stuff growing around it.
Make the motion with knowledge, David Bowles, by monthly report.
I second that with a, with a question, comment from last, from our last meeting. Mike, you weren't here. Mark filled in for you. We were discussing the requirement for us to come up with a plan, a water plan and that sort of stuff. And Mark had indicated that you had reached out to David and some other folks. And I was wondering if David had any input on that plan or anything?
I visited with the lady from DEQ last week. I have a meeting with her today at 1:30 at DEQ. She suggested that I try to get, we tried to get a copy of the Comanche County plan. I talked to the lady at Comanche County twice last week and she said she didn't send it to me by Friday and I hadn't seen it. I called her Friday afternoon and asked her for it, left a message again for it. It's till I go visit with Michelle, I guess, from DEQ, then I'll get a little more information. I think it's going to be more than a few pages from what I got from Michelle from DEQ last week. I think the thought was it was not going to be a whole lot of pages. She said, oh, no, you're still going to have to do the whole plan.
So I think the majority of the board, and I can't speak to the board just myself, but what we're concerned with is the requirements, right? That we highlight what the county is required to do, right? From the DEQ standpoint, what is it that they are, would use a better word, demanding that the county enforce? What is it we're supposed to enforce? Who are we supposed to call and how are we supposed to enforce it? Those are the questions that we, that a lot of us have on this.
And she, in our conversation last week, she seemed to be aware, she understood the process. This time, it, to me, it seemed like that shouldn't, we don't have zoning or planning and we don't have people that, I can't jump your fence and check water samples on your property behind your, on your place.
No, I'm catching a buckshot.
Yeah. And she seemed to understand that. Yes, sir.
If I may bring you some more information for that. Okay. I have had a conversation with Michelle. She can't remember the last name. And she now understands that we do not have planning and zoning. She understands vaguely that we can't pass ordinances even if they are unable to be implemented. We cannot pass ordinances. We don't have that ability according to the law. And in that construction, trying to adapt that to our county, it was like, just kind of off the top of her head, it looked to me like, because it appears that there's an item in part D, the very first, that's supposed to address our issue. And then D1 on to D5 has how we have pass ordinances and whatnot. So there's a discrepancy there. I believe that what they want is for us to be able to call them or set up a meeting with them somewhere or whatever. But they are the enforcement ones, so they want us to be their eyes and ears. And I think that's what this is being hammered out to. They understand that they are the authority. We are not. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. So David's going to be with her today at 1:30. I should be home by then. If they need to call me, I'll be following up on that.
Well, you know, with that, I mean, you're saying that we're going to be their eyes and ears for, for this.
Yes.
I mean, we don't have time to run around and do their job. We're elected to do our jobs and I'm not going to run around doing DEQ's job.
And I totally understand. I do. And so what, you know, I mean, they want education in the classes on stormwater and all that BS. And that's an easy thing, I think. David can handle that without any problem. But right now, I use them. You know, if I have people who were griping because somebody's crap or water is going over on their land, I call the DEQ and have them come check it out, see if there's anything they can do because they're infringing upon other people's property and lakes and streams and such as that. So there's a real use to them. I, I think we could work with them. We don't have to call them for every little nitty and anything. There's some things I wouldn't call them about too, you know? But, you know, that's just me, so.
Well, to follow up and close the
Yeah, we'll get it.
My part of the conversation to follow up and close is I, I would like for us to have a short process for how we do this as well. But my, my main concern was that, you know, it's been since July they came out, was it July, June?
Yes.
Maybe even earlier than that when, oh, I think it was, well, the last time they were out here was in December of last year.
No, actually, and this all started like in February. They've been out here two or three different times. And it kind of went through May.
I thought they were out here, the first time they came out here is when we had the discussion about imported firearms and that was in December of last year, 15th.
But that, that was not the stormwater. That was DEQ over the burning.
Oh, okay. They're getting confused. But anyway, my, my point being is that, you know, when we ask them, well, what, what happens if we decide we don't care? And they said, well, then you get to pay that $10,000 a day fine. And so we, we need to have something in place, a, some kind of an agreement within in place. Rather, I mean, on their timetable, so we don't get into that. I think that's what we're trying to achieve here. That $10,000 a day argument with them. And that's, that's my biggest concern.
If I may, and David, when you speak to her, I think the biggest problem, we can say we have no planning and zoning, but what that leads to, that I think is kind of the disconnect with her, is her not understanding because of that, we have no clue who's building what and where. And therefore, there is nothing that we can do regulatory with construction, which is part of what they want. Because we don't know when it's being built. The closest that this board could come, and we're talking a very small area that falls under this, would be the filing of a plat to give us the indication that this plat is subdivision. But because there's absolutely no requirement for anyone to tell us they're building anything anywhere, that's what makes the requirement so difficult.
Well, yeah, and that's my point is we need to understand what the requirement is. What we're, what are we going to be required to enforce, you know? And like, I kind of agree with Monty. I don't want to be enforcing their, I don't want to be doing their job for them.
Well, I mean, it's impossible to do their job if we don't even know what's being done out there. And we don't because that's the way it works here.
Well, if they file a plat, I mean, we can forward that on to them.
We can send them a copy of the plat.
That'd be an interesting thing.
However, you can have subdivisions and this county has probably 40 that are known as unrecorded plats. Because the law does not require someone to record a plat to subdivide. And therefore, we have unrecorded plats. We have the individual out on their 10 acres just deciding to build a house or plow up or do whatever they want. And we, meaning the county as a whole in this room, have no knowledge of that. Therefore, it's kind of hard to even be able to report to DEQ when you don't know it's happening. And I think that's the big hinge.
Well, the thing that needs to be really verbalized in, in this agreement.
The day David was up here, I took it that she thought we was going to ride around in a truck looking for someone building a house.
Well, she did. She, she did.
Yeah.
You're not in, the area that is, we need to remember is a very, very small area just north of Waterloo Road.
Most of it's in District 1 and it goes over to District 2.
A little bit into District 2. It only comes up what, a mile, mile and a half maybe, north of Waterloo in what is now urbanized area, or designated urbanized area because of the population count. So that is the only area of the county that is included in this.
I think Monty was including the rural areas when he said he wasn't included. As a member of the board.
I just get tired of my friends right there.
And I was hoping to get Comanche County's plan. If DEQ's already blessed theirs, then we could give us a better template to go by.
Do you know if they have planning and zoning in Comanche County?
I don't know.
I think the reason that they are, were recommended is because they do not.
Yeah.
So they may have already hammered all this down.
Yeah, Michelle just said Comanche County is really good. She told, she suggested that I get ahold of, and I have it. I can't think of the customer. From Oklahoma County and from Comanche County. And then she said, no, I wouldn't talk to Oklahoma County. Because it's a lot bigger and they have to do. And I guess they have people, that's all they do.
Right.
On the payroll in Oklahoma County is this stuff.
Yeah.
So maybe we could get Oklahoma County to include our urbanized area in their plan.
Proponent. Yeah. All right. So we accepted that. Shall we move on to item six?
Sure.
Consideration possible action on improving fiscal year 17 emergency management program grant contract. Again.
This is the actual grant itself. This actually, the state this year is early. Years past, it's been the end of December, January before we've signed this. I was looking back last week. We started this process in '09. Between '09 and I finished last month for 2016. By participating in this grant program, the county has received $107,500 in those years. This year, we do everything, it'll be $20,000.
Do I have a motion? What do we use it for?
Um, it's just gone back to general fund and then it helps with my sire expenses and my MNO expenses.
Just one signature? Yeah, he emailed it to me. I've actually looked it up.
Yeah, same.
I emailed it to you guys Friday so you have a chance to read over it.
I don't have a problem.
It's not anything. There's a couple of minor changes from last year, but it's paperwork, yeah.
I'll move that we approve. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seven. Consideration possible action on improving ODIC claim assessment of Logan County Rural Water District 3 for including relocation cost.
This ought to be the final bill for that.
Let's see. I signed both of these. Not all. Just that.
You know what the first invoice was, it was $10,000.
I think the $10,000 was the engineering fee. It wasn't this. This is the utility relocation cost.
That's, that's what's wrong with our little system is we had to pay an engineer $10,000.
You had me there. Okay, you can stop right there. That's what's wrong with our system. We got to pay the engineers before we do anything.
Then to move the water line, it was $55,751.
Jeez.
But I had an engineer said he would draw it up for $5,500. They don't use our engineers, they use their own.
All right, being said, I'll make the motion for a second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Item eight. Consideration possible action on preparing general form to be supplied to those requesting verification that Logan County does not have planning, zoning inspection requirements in the unincorporated areas of the county.
I brought this up at the last meeting under comments and kind of drew this up. My phone rings off the hook or now it's by email. And I know you all do too with contractors or builders or whomever that needs verification that the county has none of these requirements in the unincorporated area. And I think historically, each district has handled having their own letters and fielding that. And I kind of thought it might be nice if we just had a general form that we all send out. And then I can send them out and not forward them off to the districts or, you know, Sarah could if she gets her, whoever gets a request can just field it.
Boy, if you're covering it, I got you.
When we, we could get this kind of posted on our website too. And we could also refer people, you know, and then they can go there and find it. Because a lot, oftentimes what I've dealt with is people will say, well, I need something in writing from you saying that you don't have any requirements because I got to take that to my bank or my financial institution or whomever is, you know, that they're working with.
All the time.
You know, because they won't loan them money without that piece of paper.
Exactly.
So are we ready to take action on that? You like the wording?
I'm okay with it.
I don't have a problem with it at all.
Now, my, my question is, because I just did this on a blank piece of paper. Do you want it on a letterhead? Do you want it? I mean, I have no problem putting it on my letterhead, Gary's letter. How, how do you want it presented?
I think, I think we should put it on a county letterhead. Make a PDF after we get it all finished up, put it on the county letterhead. Put it for the chairman's signature, have him sign it. And that's what we've got after.
It works for me. I'll, I'll follow up.
All right. Is that a motion? You need a motion?
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Item nine. Consideration possible action on improving fiscal 17 agreement with Fuel Master for District Number 2. Well, we're, we're automaticiles now, my Johnny.
So are you going to Fuel Master cars or?
No. Mark?
Still being on the computer on the tank.
No, we were having some issues with our Fuel Master system that we already have. The lady on the phone texted, or the gentleman on the phone, said, once I transfer you over to the repair part, if you do not have this agreement, when we find something wrong with it, you're going to have to pay for whatever that is. If we have this maintenance agreement, you do not.
Are we good? Make, that's what you want?
Yeah.
Make the motion. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Item 10. Consideration possible
I have none for 10 and 11.
10 and 11 gone. Item 12. Permanent road crossing permits. I wanted, where was that? 10 little 70 and 305 was 305.
I think they're all in my district.
Okay. I'll make the motion with approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, consideration possible action on consent agenda.
I have no transfers or no transfers from fiscal year to fiscal year.
14, 5, CDRI, huh? There's a lot of saying it's going to come back.
Can we hear anything out of EMS?
Uh, yeah, I was going to bring you all into the loop. I can do that right now. As of right this moment, I still do not have the Crescent EMS budget. Therefore, our budgets are not filed. Therefore, we have no tax roll being ran. I have spoke with the auditor's office. I've been in contact with Lowell. Uh, I did call and speak with Janet Smith. I want to say it was Thursday, it may have been Friday. She said that she hoped to have it, you know, very soon. I reminded her that they would have to have a special meeting in their board to prove it. And then I have to have a special meeting for excise board and that this is delayed money coming in for every entity. And I leaned on her pretty hard. So that's where we are.
Troy, I, you know, I've talked outside of the board meeting about this issue and I really, I would like for the board to consider going back to our district attorney and looking at a different possible way to do this too. When we have, and I'm a, when we have an organization, a small organization like that, that's a small part of the budget submission that you do for the whole entire county, we, we really, there should be another method where we don't hold up the entire county's budget being submitted.
And there is a statute out there. Lowell has already, I've been in contact with him over this, that would allow the excise board to go ahead and certify mills based on last year's budget. They do not have a sinking fund, so their millage is just what's set by statute. And Lowell said there is a statute that allows that, recommended that I speak to the auditor's office about the process. I did that, which is what led Gary Jones to call Janet Smith himself and try to lean on them because there's not a formal process from them in place as to how we would actually do that.
Janet Smith.
Is the, she's a board member and the city manager for the town of Crescent. She's a board member of EMS and the one that's kind of taking up, trying to get this fixed. So that is what may have to happen. I've asked the auditor's office to, to, or, and left the message with Mr. Jones indirectly. You know, at what point do I draw the line and say, this is our drop dead date? We have to do something. And I have not received a response to that at this point. So, yeah, we're, I'm, I'm hoping by today, maybe I can get, you know, some further information. We've never been in this position before. It's kind of a, a new territory. But we do have that option with the excise board to establish millage based on, on last year. With no sinking fund, that's, that's not an issue. I mean, as far as their, their statute on their, what millage they get, so.
Who decides to go ahead and pull that trigger and say, let's do it?
That's what my question has been. At what point do we say this is, this is our only option? And I was, I met with Lowell. I had to be up there on Thursday. We discussed it again. I told him, you know, I went through the auditor's office. I'm kind of waiting for Gary Jones' response to that very question.
So here's kind of my, my recommendation would be to use the dates that are already established in the statute as the trigger date to pull, pull that switch. So if, we've got a small, like an EMS board or some, a small board out somewhere that misses, that misses getting their budget stuff back to us, back to you by the date that they're required to have it, then they're just, they're out. I mean, they're, we're going to submit and.
The problem is the state will not accept submission without
When you say the state, who?
The state auditor's office, which is who I file with.
Right, right. I understand.
I file with Nancy Grantham, who works for them but serves as the state equalization board. That's where they are technically going. They are not accepted to begin the 15-day countdown for protest period without the county in full and in total. That is our hangup. Because even though if they walked in today with their budget, they've called a special meeting, which they have not done, so I know they can't do this. Their board gets it, signs it, brings it to us. I have to have a special meeting with the excise board. I have to republish. We get it through them, get it all filed to the state, then begins the 15-day protest period at the state level.
Yeah.
You know, once.
So my, my question is, what happens if you get a rogue group like that that just decides that they all just want to quit? They walk away and nobody's there to pick up the pieces for six, eight months?
We're going to have to fall to the statute that allows the excise board to establish the statutory millage.
So is the excise board's, so is the excise board's call to do that? I mean, I think that's what Monty was asking.
Well, and I've been working with them as well on trying to get the answer. I mean, we've been trying to get this answer of how far at what point. And then if, if, the next question was the procedure. Is there a special form? Is there special paperwork? How does the excise board specifically handle that? And that's the, the question that I have yet to be able to get answered. Auditor's office is, well, we don't really have a form.
So what I hear is nobody's really asked this question before.
Didn't ever been that.
I, I don't know that it's ever been that big, you know, went to this extent. I mean, I, trust me, I'm trying because it is hell. We can't run a tax roll.
I understand you're frustrated like everybody else, but there's got to be some relief. I mean, and you know that. That's my only comment.
And to, to fill in the rest of the conversation that I had with Lowell regarding this, without a budget being formalized, I can't appropriate the budgeted funds that was approved through the two boards until it goes through the protest period at the state. However, July 1, we only appropriated half of last year's budget for operating expenses and those are burning through. So my question to Lowell was, okay, how do I, I'm fixing to run out of money. And he told me that we can do another temporary appropriation. So I have not had a chance with the end of the month to, to look at, after we cleared checks.
When do we run out of money?
Well, that's what I don't know. So I will let you all know if we have to come back in to do another fix while we're trying to muddle through. Is where I'm at.
I told Janet Smith today myself. I'll make a motion with approval to consent.
We haven't finished it.
Well, you put your hand into that.
You asked. Blankets. Blankets is the end of consent.
I didn't ask.
Oh, is that checks? How about checks?
Paying bills checks or us getting paid checks?
Oh, us getting, receiving checks.
I like that one better. Or sales tax.
Sales tax has been up the last two months and I'm really not sure what the big jump was from.
So we have quite a bit of this.
So Monty, you going to tell the town of Crescent if they don't pay up, we're going to give them the Kingfisher can?
We're going to have to do something for the kids. But I'll call a couple of the board members today, visit them, see what they had on that process and tell them our intentions if they don't. You know what he designed?
Hmm?
You know what he designed? Transfer, transfer money to Latino.
Buddy.
Ooh.
All right, buddy.
Sneaking stuff on me like that.
You mean you don't read everything inside of it?
Troy, you got the invoice for Troy, you got the invoice for the C D R I from the bridge I did on County Road sixty-nine to Heskeyland?
I think they come in.
Do you want each individual ticket?
We usually put them all with you.
I got about ninety of them in there.
Yes, you had all them magnets into the side of your lay down machine the other day.
And also that R O Y is gonna start the bridge Wednesday.
Does ACO have a legislative committee or how do they... Who's the chairman?
Everybody's got a legislative.
I'm learning.
Gary Starmer's, I think, is the chairman.
It was Ray Vaughn.
Ray's the... He's the chairman of the C D five legislative.
Right. But he's talking about the ACO legislative one.
I know they're trying to get everything transferred out of there to...
Yeah, they're trying to get out of that business.
ACO's trying to get out of legislative business?
Well, some of the...
You mean quit lobbying, you mean?
No, they're not always lobbying.
Managing money, tax money, anything has to do with tax money, they want, they're trying to separate themselves because they don't wanna follow the open meetings laws.
They don't wanna have to get audited again. And that is shift for not following open meetings laws.
Are you wanting to get ahold of them or something?
Yeah, I've written them.
I think that's who it is. Did you ever read that audit?
Of ACO? Yeah, I think I did.
It's not very complimentary. But if you want free T-shirts and ink pens and stuff like that, you show up at their meetings, it sounds like. You can get a wardrobe out of the deal.
Somehow I picked that right up all of a sudden.
About the time they quit buying lunch for everybody?
They went, uh...
Pretty much.
They sent them to Jen's Warehouse, my own sports jackets and...
Yeah, she was doing that. Yeah, she was in a lot of trouble for doing that.
I sure ain't heard of it.
I agree.
No, they've been kinda quiet about it.
She smoozed them all.
So when we talk about transparency, that's exactly why.
Yeah. Been trying to get them to open up for a long time. Sure has.
If y'all don't mind me doing comments announcements about the board.
Yeah, yeah. Let's go for... Any citizens desiring to be heard? Yes, sir. You came in and you've been nice and quiet? Yes, sir.
You say the same way. Just admiring.
Just admiring? Well, thank you.
Appreciate that.
We don't often have a fan club show up.
Something I got is the DA's office has been calling me and one of the floors in the DA's office is buckling up.
Oh, no.
They would like to get it repaired. Do y'all know anybody that might be interested in working on that?
Is it, is it written, written heat and smoke coming up from the buckling? And, I mean, that's just, because we were just talking about, you know, the rapture coming because of this election season we've been having.
Could be. I don't know.
Which, which floor is it, Monty?
It's, they're in the DA's office.
Third floor? Between the second, third floor, that, that floor.
So if y'all know someone we can send over to even look at it to see what's going on?
Oh, gee. I really don't.
I, I just know that Hickson Construction folks is the only ones I've ever dealt with, but...
Can we recess and go over on the page or? I'll just look at it.
I know. I'll just go look at it.
Can we get our consent agenda's?
He's still working through.
He's still working.
Well, he's gonna approve the checks receiving.
Yeah, if he was paying out, that'd be different. Getting made some test medical retirement.
Yeah, I have never got no quote on the insulation guy. I can't get him to show up. I don't know anybody else. Insulating out of the DA's office. There's zero insulation.
The duct work, insulating the duct work or?
Not just on the ceiling itself. I make a motion on the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we went through citizens. You have any more comments, announcements?
That's all I got.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for item sixteen.
I just got one for fifteen.
Sure.
And just so everybody is aware, I'll be bringing to the board on the fifteenth a, a resolution to ask the state legislature to consider changing the statute on SERP funds and sending those funds directly to the counties.
Bring it on.
You bet.
But, and I'll be talking with Troy about the best way to put the resolution together and that sort of stuff. But I, I wanted to let the board know we'll, we'll present that to the board on the fifteenth. It'll be after the election. The new legislature will be able to, to put that together. And if you have any suggestions on how to work that as far as directing it to our representatives and senators.
Quoting our money.
Because they're the ones that are gonna have to change it, right? And, and I've, I've kind of got about a half page started on the resolution, but I would certainly entertain any, any help on putting that resolution together.
Sounds good.
And also got the, we've also got the change staked out. Kind of run that by Troy a little bit as far as the legalese, what to add, what to subtract. And it actually worked out pretty well. And based on Troy's recommendation, one of the things that I've done is put that, an extra paragraph in there that talks about how the counties manage that, that money like, like we do the C, the C D R I? Yes. The C D R I money we get today. And that's what we're asking them to do is to treat the, the C I R B funds just as they do the C D R I funds, like they sent it, was it back in two thousand eight? They started sending this directly to the county.
Those were originally part of SERP and split out.
Right.
And ACO Legislative Committee does have that as one of their items for lobbying on.
So, so Mike, we, we went to the, the C E D meeting, the last one, and they were talking about that. And the, the, the Association of County Commissioners is not for this. They, they said that they...
Did they, did they, did they...
They're not, they're not...
They said...
They're not in favor of it. They don't wanna do it. What they're, they said they were concerned about the, the CAB being affected by the County Advisory Board that they're involved with. And somehow they, they seem to think that if the money is sent directly to the counties that that somehow would take some of the authority away from the CAB board that they have now. I don't know what it would. I've, I've looked at it. I can't, for the life of me, figure that one out. But that's what, what they're saying, so.
We're looking at who has the power is what you're saying, basically.
Well, I think that's it. It's all about, I mean, it's politics, money and power, right?
There's, there's no question. I'll go along with that.
We're gonna have to convince a lot of other counties to support this with their legislators, legislators outside of any support from ACO.
Sure. Uh, you know, I mean, there's an awful lot of the commissioners there that believe like we do.
Oh, absolutely.
On that. And I think Rod Cleveland is one of our big champions on that, and I've certainly been following with him on that. We need to get that, you know, directly as it was originally intended by the legislators when they passed that. So I agree with you.
Well, they, they all act like they agree with this, but...
Yeah, I know. That's face time.
And they tell you to put something officially in it.
That's face time.
But then they start back calling it.
They're, they're trying to lead us along. Oh, yeah, we're all for that, but hey, let's not do it right now. Yeah, I understand.
I can tell you, we had some stuff on the agenda, and I thought I had the support of all of them, and I'm the only one.
But it may be before this board took formal action, I'm just questioning.
Sure.
Yeah.
To put, kind of construct the resolution in a format that we send to all the county commissioners statewide and see how many will put their name on it.
This might be...
Oh, oh, the, the direction of the resolution, who we're directing the resolution to?
Well, no, I'm, I'm just saying, kind of put together the plan, which would be the resolution essentially, without it being a resolution to start with, and send it to all seventy-seven counties. All three of the seventy-seven, and ask them to put their name on it to support.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So...
And if you, if you got, I, I think you would get a really good idea of how much support you could have. Then resolutions to each county that go out as a formal, the board supports this, and then send them on.
And bypass that, that, uh, bunch of yeho's or?
There you go.
Well, I'm, I'm with you on that. So, uh, the, the resolution, uh...
I guess I'm saying rather than, than this board being the first to take the resolution, which I know this board doesn't have a problem, I'm just saying that maybe if it was put out there and asked for everyone to put their support, or even do your resolution in a manner that then it forwards to all the counties.
I see. I like that better. I like that.
However, I'm just saying, try to go individually to the counties and see if, how many commissioners you can get to sign it and put their name on the line. And I think that gives a little more teeth to ACO being forced to have to support. Because let's face it, they're lobbying. I mean, that's what they do.
Well, my resolution was never, ever intended to be sent to ACO for their endorsement.
Right, right. But what I'm saying is, is...
But the commissioners.
Is associations work that way.
That's right.
But it only works that way if the members of the associations are there. So it's really easy for ACO to sit back and say, well, we're not involved. We don't want it. We don't want it. But no one's...
Well, they sat back and said, the commissioners don't support it.
But the, but no one has said, this is what we want. Will you put your name on the line?
Right. So, okay, so...
I think that's a good idea.
When's, when's do this work on that? Or if we, we got some time set aside for that and another issue we're working on? All right, that's all I have on item fifteen, sir.
Okay. All right, so item sixteen.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.